Hello, welcome everybody. We'd like to, Mayor Whalen is running a little bit late and Deputy Mayor Moss is excused today. So council is going to have Councilmember Bokey. Oh, well, look who's rolling in right now. So there you go. He's here.
Exactly. Welcome. Welcome, welcome. Ready to go? So first item is our joint Lakewood Arts Commission meeting. Thanks Lonnie. Alright, introduce yourselves.
Hello, my name is Emily Faleen. I'm the Chair of the Arts Commission. And before we all go around and introduce ourselves, I just wanted to start us off by thanking all of you for your continued support of our commission and the work that we do, and particularly to Councilmember Bell for your support. And we have so much fun with you at our retreats and we're just very grateful for your involvement. So thank you all for having us tonight and for your support of the Arts Commission. And I will pass it on to my right here.
Hello, my name is Adi Kleckner and this is my first year on the Arts Commission.
Earl Borgert, Vice Chair. I don't know how many years it's been, six or seven.
Hi, my name is Kellis Parlett and I'm an artist and I'm curator. And as you know, the last time that our little studio ran a little exhibition in Lakewood City Hall. So we had a wonderful time with working with Sally. And yeah, so, well, nice to meet you guys all.
Shauna Alexander, my second year on the Arts Commission, thank you.
I'm Nancy Cameron, this is my first year on the Arts Commission.
And I'm Phil Rashke, the last surviving original member of the Commission.
Well preserved.
I'm Lonnie Neal and like Earl, I can't remember how long I've been on this commission. I love it, probably seven or eight years at this point. Okay, then we'll go with seven or eight. I don't know. And then I also wear a second hat where I help run special events for the city of Lakewood, so.
Hello, I'm Sylvia Streya and I've been on the Arts Commission for, I think, four years. Same as you? Nice. I run with the queens.
Hi everyone, Daryl Owens, and I think I'm on my third round, on the third time's a charm, right?
You can have it, you can have it. Did you see how long he's been out of the Commission?
Alright, well, thank you. So that is all of us here at the Arts Commission and I think we are going to turn it over to Earl for our Signal Box presentation.
So this video has all the Signal Boxes to date at thirty-three locations. And I'd like to give a big thank you to the council for supporting the Arts Commission and their goal to wrap these Signal Boxes with beautiful art. We are proud to have installed these thirty-three locations to date and we have selected artists of all ages, including students and from many different cultural backgrounds. Next steps for 2025, Signal Boxes on Silicon Boulevard and PAC Highway. We reached out to the student artists at Pierce College for Silicon Boulevard boxes and to PAC and Hawa Sil Art Studio managed by Kellis Parlett for her students' art. They are a low-cost way to beautify Lakewood and we are receiving excellent feedback on them. We thought doing Silicon, the ones on Silicon Boulevard would be a good idea because it would be leading up to Pierce College. And it's, everything has been recently renovated on Silicon Boulevard with brand-new boxes and sidewalks and pavement. Thank you very much for the council for that as well. So I hope all of you have been enjoying these. It's been a very fun thing to do over the past few years.
Earl, remind us just a little bit roughly the cost per box and that's been covered by our existing budget, is that right?
It has. And then Sally, what is the cost?
It's about twenty-five hundred per box.
And then how much of that goes to the artist, Karen?
Seven hundred per large box and four hundred per small box.
And the rest of it's what, material?
Right, come out and do the estimates and do the rap.
And you know, another interesting thing about that though is that the company that actually does it is a Lakewood company as well. So the project, Prince Northwest?
Northwest, that's great.
So I mean, the project even benefits the business community as well, absolutely, Mr. Brandstetter.
Yes, I had a question about the oldest boxes, how are they wearing or when will they need to be refreshed or become available for a new?
I believe each installation, like each wrap, has a life of about ten years. And I think they've been holding up very well. They're easily maintained as far as, because I think a couple of them have been tagged, very easy to clean up and to remove all, any of that graffiti. And then most likely, if we do get to the point where we have wrapped all of the boxes, then we may look at some point as actually, you know, starting from the very beginning one and starting again, so.
Well, I think that the council can help you in that because we're constantly doing projects that create more boxes.
And removing some too.
However, oh, some time ago, a year or more, there was some discussion about perhaps inviting each of the sister cities to submit a piece of art to put on a box. Maybe putting them in proximity along a single street or something, I guess. And at that time, the amusing was maybe that would be a good thirtieth anniversary type item where we're doing that. But is that been looked at in any decision on the feasibility of doing that or of sending a request to the four sister cities?
I don't see why not. I mean, I think that's a wonderful idea that we can definitely explore, yes.
Well, if the commission could explore it, I think there were some one-on-one discussions with a couple of the cities that had representatives visit here in the last couple of years. And they weren't necessarily decision-makers or art folks, but we, the sister cities programs have generally been interested in cultural exchange and doing that. And like this year, some, you know, we had a entertainment group that was funded by the Sister City and Gimme Hey that came. And there have been some similar things. So if that could be refreshed in terms of it as an idea to look at the feasibility of doing that and to, to ask about the willingness on the other side.
Yeah, I don't see why not. We can definitely discuss that in the next council, I mean, commission meeting because that's a great idea.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Bokey, so first of all, these are, these have been great. And at twenty-five hundred dollars a box, don't, don't take this wrong, but it's cheap grace. It really is. I mean, really positive impact on the community, I think, really neat. And I love, but I want to hear about the process you use to select the pieces. Can you, can you kind of let us in on that? So you've had these initial discussions. You know the locations. So how do you go about determining if you've got four locations and fifteen pieces of art? How do you make that decision? What's the process?
As far as the location or the piece of art itself?
You've done, you've, you've, I gather you've chosen the locations, you're now looking for the art, the piece of art itself. How do you go from fifteen to four?
Well, we do submit a call to artists and then those called artists submit various different works. And then we have a subcommittee or a sub-commission that gets together and chooses which pieces of art that we feel best would be, would identify with that part of the community. Whether it be children playing for the one near Park Lodge or some more cultural related ones in the International District and things of that nature. I mean, you know, even one where in the, you know, the Industrial District, I kind of wanted to have the one with the whole bunch of birds on top of the telephone wire because I thought that kind of fit there. So we just, yeah, I mean, and we have fun add too, so. Yeah, because there do, there are a lot of artists that do submit their works because they're very interested in being part of this program.
That's great. That is great. How many more boxes do you have left, do you think?
I want to say, isn't it forty-something?
Oh, my goodness.
Right around there.
Yeah, because I think we have like some seventy-something in total.
Okay.
But then there's more roundabouts coming, so.
There's a lot of places. No, I really do appreciate it. I think as a group, you've done a great job in selection. I love the piece. Well, I love several pieces, but that one now that the library is across the street, it just all fits.
Yeah, exactly.
Really enjoy it.
Why, thank you.
They are beautiful. Well, great. I was surprised to see how many we have done, frankly. It started with, remember, just a couple we started out with and then all of a sudden it's just really blossomed.
Well, it's been a few years now.
So, I like it's great.
Great, thank you, Earl. Alright, so the next piece that we're going to talk about is our public art installation of the mural by Perico the Artist. And so before I dive into how the mural was selected and the process for that, I just wanted to take a moment because the mural is tied to this initiative of beloved community which Dr. John Scott presented to the council in concurrence of that city initiative. So we really wanted the mural to reflect this new beloved community initiative that we were launching. So through a democratic process, we put out a call to artists and then the Arts Commission voted and Perico the Artist was selected. So he created the mural on the barn at Fort Silicon Park. It was completed in May and the official title is our Beloved Community mural. And then there's a plaque on the barn that has the title of the mural. And then it states, "This mural is inspired by the beloved community philosophy that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Thich Nhat Hanh promoted. It emphasizes unity, justice, and compassion. The children from different cultures sharing food in a garden symbolize care, connection, and community. The monarch butterfly represents migration and movement. In Mexican culture, its return symbolizes ancestors visiting from beyond and reminding us of the sacrifices made by those who came before us and the beauty of our diverse heritage. This mural reflects Lakewood's dedication to love, inclusion, and celebrating diversity." So this theme ties in very well with our beloved community events that we've held and the initiative. We had the ribbon cutting just this past weekend. So thank you to Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and then council members Brandstetter, Bokey, and Bell for coming and thanking the artist in person. We greatly appreciate that. I also just wanted to include, aside from the mural, as we continue to promote beloved community at events, we are hosting the citywide Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Event. That will be on his actual birthday, January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-six. That will be at Pierce College. So myself and our DEI Director, we are pulling together a bunch of events on campus that day. There'll be artists and performances. We'll also be, there'll be a play that will be performed. And then also Pierce College is hosting, along with the Vibrant Schools, we are going to do a fundraiser community screening of a documentary called Counted Out. And we've hired Dr. Scott to come and facilitate that screening and that discussion. So we'll be promoting that also at the Martin Luther King event. Alright, and then our next presenter will be Adi Kleckner for our Public Art for Capital Improvements.
Perfect. Okay, so we've also been partnering with the Parks Department, kind of put more art in the parks and with the recent work that's been done, both at American Lake and Woods Lake. So at American Lake, we have an artist, Sarah Robbins, who has built wraps for the Trash Bays. And so we kind of, we were looking for artists who had kind of colorful, vibrant art that would bring, make the space feel kind of alive. It is like the second most popular park in the, in the city, which I live around the corner from, so I was really not surprised by that, but excited to be so close. And so we chose, she created this work for us that's inspired by the wildlife in the area. And so we have like kind of some nods to some of the earlier mural that was in the space before with like the mountain is out. So we have kind of, kind of carrying that theme forward in this park. And so you can see those Trash Bay designs here. We've also doing some work with Woods Lake Park. And so at Woods Lake, we have all of these Signal Boxes out front that we're going to be wrapping. And we also have work in the interior of the park as well. And so Kenji Stoll is a local artist out of Tacoma who's doing kind of, these are the work that he's going to kind of build off of. So this is kind of what kind of drew us to their work. So these kind of floral motifs, very bright and vibrant again. We know that Woods Lake is kind of tucked away, so we wanted to find something that would really kind of let people know that this park is there and welcome them to it, kind of creating a space for community and vibrancy. And so, and then we also have another artist, Craig Kundif, who is going to be wrapping the loo here as well as doing some other work as well. And so his work here also is also kind of strongly botanical, but also has a kind of wildlife imagery as well with these strong vibrant colors. And so we wanted to continue that theme from the exterior into the park where we have this kind of really large-scale vibrancy that kind of emphasized the community and the value of this park and this space for us. So that's been a fun project to work on as well.
I have a question for you. Has it been your experience, and maybe this is one for Sally as well, that it's kind of almost like sunliness by environmental design where we do the wraps and it seems to have lessened graffiti opportunities in areas around the city? Does that tend to be what you've seen and maybe Sally, what you see anecdotally in other cities? For example, the Portland loo would be a wonderful opportunity for someone to provide their own artistry that we wouldn't want. But doing the wrap, I think, would be probably precluding that from happening to some extent.
Yeah, a hundred percent. And that was what was behind the wraps is all the research shows that it actually does prevent graffiti. And you know, we learned a little bit, we had maybe one or two artists where they left a little bit too much negative space and they got tagged. So now we're more careful, like fill the whole box. But a hundred percent that is the reason we're doing the wraps is to beautify but prevent graffiti.
Yeah, it's a win-win for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think it also shows, I mean, these are parks that are used and we also want to encourage use. I think it shows that they're valuable to, you know, to the city and that they're places where people go and they care about, you know, I think. I mean, I see, I see our job as not just beautifying, but also kind of building community and making a space that people want to live in and be in. And so I think that's part of this, yeah.
Builds respect. You know, the one that was painted, not wrapped obviously, but the bathroom, the restroom was painted in the park last year or two years ago, last year. That's survived quite well. I think it looks great. And I think people have respected that sense of community that's been created by that. So very good.
Alright, thank you, Adi. And now we'll hear from Lonnie Neal talking about our quarterly rotating art displays and art receptions.
Alright, yeah, so we have a great set of displays every quarter here at City Hall. First quarter this year, we had Rodney King, who was the artist, and that, and his work definitely ties in with MLK and Black History Month. And we had a jazz performer and a spoken word artist. I personally just love his work, so it's, but that was very fun. And then of course, we're tying in the theme of beloved community and that's something that, yeah, just resonated through Rodney's work as well. Second quarter, we had Kellis and her arts group come. And that was a tremendous, just a tremendous reception that we had. I mean, we had to have had four hundred people or something there because of all the artists that were on display and their families that came. Eighty-five percent of her students are from different cultures and the ages ranged from kids who are as little as four who are the artists up to, you know, folks who are like seventy-four, seventy-five. So a fantastic turnout for that. And next Monday, we're having our third quarter reception. So that's artist Diana Aoki. And we also have the Washington Tacoma Korean American Association. And they are connected with the Northwest Writers Association. So in City Hall right now, you will see some displays of art, you know, created by the artists. And then there's some poems and words that dovetail with that. And then what I want to be able to say to you here is that the show will go from five to seven. We have VIPs in attendance that will be there, will be the President of the Tacoma Korean Association, the President of the Writers Association, and the Cultural Council from the Korean consulate. And then at six o'clock, Mayor Whalen will give a short talk and the artists will also be there to present their work. So, yeah, so but really come because these receptions are so much fun. And it's really fun to engage with the artists and, you know, just talk to them about their work and, yeah, and then have a little nibble while you're there. So, and then fourth quarter, we are going to have Pierce College and their students. We, we did that last year for the first time and that was an exciting opportunity where we probably had, I don't know, thirty, thirty or forty artists. And they all got to showcase either, you know, anywhere between one and half a dozen pieces of their art. And that was just a great way for folks from the community and all these families from the community come in. And an exciting opportunity for up-and-coming art students to, you know, showcase their work in a gallery-type setting. So these are really fun.
That's Member Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. So I had a question about, I know that we had talked about as a council of working, moving forward to start purchasing some artwork from each one of the shows to create a city art gallery. I'm not quite sure where we are with that, so I just wanted to follow up on that and if that was something that we as a council needed to also follow up on.
I can speak to that. Emily and Susan have spent quite a bit of time researching that and creating kind of a draft policy because there is quite a bit to discuss. How do we select it? How much money do we spend? Where do we put it? So that's in progress and it's just gotten tabled because of all the other things we're doing, but we haven't forgotten about it.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Lonnie. And next we'll have Daryl and Sylvie talk about our MLK Beloved Community event.
Thank you, everyone. Council, Mayor, excuse me. January eleventh marked a little bit of a departure from previous MLK events. As you all know, we spent the last four years with wonderfully produced videos that highlighted students and elders and community. This year, we decided to do something a little bit more commemorative and involved our welcome walk. And so on January, January the eleventh, we combined the welcome walk with the MLK celebration. And with that, we had Dr. John Scott, who you see up here, who, correct Sally, was very instrumental in speech writing with Dr. Martin Luther King. And Thicke Van An, his book, Beloved Community, and that of course is our theme. And Emily and both Lonnie mentioned the concept behind beloved community. And with that in mind, we had a tour of the grounds at Fort Silicon Park. We had the welcome walk around Wahab Lake, which was very well received. It gave people a chance who are new to the community to get engaged and meet people in the community. And some of us who have been here for a while gave us a renewed sense of community. So it was a very well-received event. And we had three workshops that further expanded on Dr. Martin Luther King's initiative of a beloved community. And I think it was a very well-attended and strong event.
Thanks, Daryl. It was excellent. Very fun event and a nice change, if you will. If you can do something different, that was a really good way to do it with the welcome walk and the programming. Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, and I do believe that the selection of about a dozen signs or so with encouraging messages of things that folks to do that were created out of that event. But then of a period throughout the year at, at other cities events have, you know, have proven to be an investment that had legs and was, you know, I think, well-received and very noticeable. And the messages had value because of the repetition of seeing them multiple times as you, as you went through to be able to do that. And the fact that they were in multiple languages. So I thought that was a thing of where events don't have to be singular, things that are events. Things that are events like the beloved community theme can persist over time. Um, and, and, and then be more impactful and at the community level.
Great.
Thank you, Daryl. All right. We have Lonnie up next to talk about our street festival on Motor Ave.
Where am I talking about the concerts?
Uh, the street festival, just no photos.
Okay, no photos.
Sorry.
Festival, no worries. Um, so we had a great street festival this year over on uh, Motor Avenue. That was on May thirtieth. And um, these Motor Avenue events started a few years ago and they, they have really been a, a great little launching platform for us to incorporate the arts. Um, we certainly have music and we have performances. Uh, the first year we did events on Motor Avenue, um, we had a, several of our Latina artists. And that is really kind of what has manifested itself into what Fiesta de, uh, de la familia has become. So um, that's just an exciting thing for us as a commission. Um, yeah, so the, this May thirtieth event ended up being great. The weather turned out being perfect. Um, and I think what we learned internally is that we had, we had a really good turnout. And probably doing a Friday night event, this was the first time we had done a Friday night event from four to seven, um, had a really good turnout. I think families, uh, you know, are wrapping up their work week. They're coming home from school, they're coming home from work and they wanted to come and be at this sort of spring kickoff of all the things that are going to come for the summer. So it was a good event.
Great.
I think you can just keep on rolling. We're up next with the summer concerts.
I'll, I will keep on rolling. Yeah, summer concerts, so much fun. Yeah. So um, our summer concerts overlap with our farmer's market. Uh, they run from six thirty to eight o'clock on uh, Tuesday evenings. Not all of our farmer's markets, but the majority of them. Um, and they're just fun. And this year by far, we, we continue every year to see uh, an increase in the amount of participation that we have. Um, but you, but I can't say sellout crowds because of course our events are free. But um, we have, I mean, just it, it, the turnout has been just really incredible. And it's a, it's a fun range of music and it's, it's been a boost to the farmer's market as well. Um, because again, folks are coming, if they don't come earlier in the day, they're coming after work. They're going to do some shopping at the market, they're going to get their meals at the, you know, get their dinner. And then they go over to watch the summer concerts. So a lot of fun. And every now and then you'll catch me dancing there.
Great, thank you. And next we'll hear from Sylvie Estrella for, about the Fiesta de la Familia celebration.
Okay, so first of all, I just want to convey a heartfelt, huge thank you to the council for allowing us to have this fiesta. I'm not going to cry. But I'm saying thank you to all of you on behalf of all of the cultures, the Latino cultures that were there and all the people that were there celebrating because it was amazing. It, we didn't know how it was going to turn out. And I have to tell you that I was a little bit scared about it, about um, what was going to happen. I was worried about what was going to happen to the people that decided to attend, that were brave enough to attend. But everything worked out just fine. The rain stopped. Um, the police presence there were, they were amazing and, and just happy. I mean, the, the vibe was just one of celebration. And it was almost like a relief, like people were so happy to gather and to participate with their families. And it was just really wonderful. Um, we had so many activities for everyone that attended. Um, because of your approval on the um, for fiesta, we were able to commission artists to, to do workshops, to make the puppets that were just fun for, to walk around and see. And um, we paid uh, artists to do workshops, the ofrenda. We had the community tree, which was um, really sweet. Um, people would put their names and what they bring to the community. And some of the kids, you know, they were bringing love and family and help and um, service and just all kinds of things that they put on the tree. And that's always great to see. Um, so this, this fiesta really supported art and culture and that's so important. And, and after the fiesta, when we were cleaning up, I had so many people come up to me, um, not just Latinos. Uh, but so many people came up to me and said, thank you, thank you to the city for putting this on. We really needed it. We really need it and we need to keep doing it every year. So many people said that. And that just, because we, we weren't sure what was going to happen, of course, and I'm just really grateful, you know, I just, I'm really grateful to see all the kids. And I know, thank you to the, the, all the commission, the council members that were there. Um, you, you got to see the same as I did, kids laughing, families just having fun. And that's what Lakewood's about. That's what beloved community is about, right? So, thank you.
So Sue, sorry, Susan isn't here. So I'll just say very quickly, because I know we're running over our time, that we have an annual retreat as the Arts Commission and ongoing education and bonding and gelling together is something that we do once a year. And I think it's really formed the strong foundation that helps us make all these really difficult decisions and have the difficult conversations about selecting artists. Like Louis said, it's not easy. And thank you, Louis. She had um, a food demo as part of this retreat and it was fabulous.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And last we will hear from Shawna um, about the Holiday Parade of Lights.
Thank you. So I wanted to share about the Holiday Parade of Lights. Um, this year, the event will be on December sixth. Uh, in the past, we've had over thirty floats with hundreds of walkers and um, different groups like car clubs and uh, school, um, school bands and different community groups. Um, it's a great opportunity for the community to come together with their groups and create an art piece that moves along to share with the community. It's always a pleasure to see the streets lined up all the way from Park Lodge down here to Main Street, um, elbow to elbow people. So uh, it's an opportunity for people of all ages to come together, um, from preschool age all the way to elders, um, creating not only the floats, but their, their group camaraderie to come together. Um, so they've, you've seen it grow in the last ten years. We appreciate your participation, whether it's announcing or riding on your own new float that you guys come down Main Street with. Um, I have had the opportunity to come together with my friends to build a parade float since 2017. Um, I got engaged because the city posted a Facebook post that
That's funny.
that listed three elements. It said, um, here's three reasons to help you create your first parade float. And it said, discover the joy of creating something wonderful. Increase the visibility of being seen by hundreds of Lakewood residents. Bond with your team in a creative atmosphere. I reached out to uh, Sally at the City of Lakewood and said, I'm not affiliated with any organization for this. I just want to deal with my friends. Can we do this? And she said, absolutely. This, this is what we want. We want everybody to feel included in a way to express their own freedom of art. Um, so since 2017, I've had a group of friends come together with me to create our own float in a unique way. Um, so we appreciate that opportunity to express our freedom of artist expression. So, thank you.
That's great.
And she's been very humble. She monopolized the first place for the best float, I think, every year.
Not intentional.
No competition. That's great.
Well, thank you very much. Um, thank you for having us.
Yeah. Great questions of council. I'll start with Councilmember Bell and then Brandon.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Um, you guys are an amazing team. You know that. I, we just love everything that you do and it's so innovative and obviously creative because you are the Arts Commission. What I really appreciate is how you guys bring in um, all the different types of mediums. It's not just, okay, here's a painting. We have talked tonight about, yes, murals. We've talked about the raps, we've talked about written word, um, the music. The, there's just so many different venues and mediums that you guys embrace. And I love that, that that diversity is there and that we get to touch on many different cultures too, throughout all of that. And I really appreciate the tie-in of beloved community this year. I went to um, actually, right there, well, but I went to one of the workshops and it was amazing. So I really thought that that really set a tone for everything that you guys do. And you really threaded that and made it go throughout the year in your work plan. I do have two questions. One of them is, I would love to know what your plans are for next year because it is the thirtieth anniversary of the city. So I think that something like that probably should have already been started to talk about if not. And then I know that we have a new roundabout going in um, on Gravely and Nianza. And that is just a prime opportunity for some art, which I believe um, we have, that might, uh, Mayor Whelan might have a little bit more information on that. So I want to throw that out there as a possible um, addition or modification to your work plan. So, but thank you. Thank you all. You're amazing. You know, I love you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll certainly follow up with that after council has a chance to ask their own questions. But did you have something, Daryl, real quick? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think it, uh, we have to throw it back to, to council and the mayor um, for making this opportunity. I, I remember vividly, we were having a conversation here during one work plan. And I think it was Paul said, uh, show us what, what's, what's next, right? And uh, challenge us, I think he said, right? And I really believe that this community and some of the other surrounding communities as well um, have really branded what community is, what beloved community is. And we couldn't do that if you didn't give us the, the go-ahead to do it. So I thank you. I, I, I'm going to speak for the rest of the, of the rest of the commission and, and say, uh, you know, it's, it's fun to come every, every month and explore what the new ideas are going to be and hash them out. And uh, sometimes they have uh, directions that they were going to go and they end up going in another direction. But that's what makes it, that's what makes it fresh and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I, I, I too had one thought regarding uh, the future. Uh, I'll let the mayor address the, 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 the roundabout issue. But, but that is something that is commented on by free, often by citizens about what are you going to put in the center of those roundabouts and that uh, and then, and then, and, and, which is then counteracted by the engineer types that say, don't put anything in the center of them. They're the, they, they, people can't see around. But uh, uh, I'm looking ahead to 2027. And um, the, the, the city has a coin. And the city's coin was created early in the thing of the cityhood. And it's, it's, it's a nice coin and people appreciate getting into it. But we're going to run out of them probably in another two years. Uh, and.
Good idea.
Uh, well, well, yeah, 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 he, he, he. I love you, Louis. He does not want his picture on anything that doesn't include a water feature. So uh, it's. It has, but, but, so, so, and so, so while I, the, the coin is nice and it's substantial, the, you know, it's, the problem is it's in English and Latin. And it, it has to do with that when we were founded and we were
Redesigning them.
Thinking Latin and I don't know, then maybe there were too many employers involved. I don't know. But, 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 but I would think that if maybe if sometime over the next two years, there could be a way to look at a design for the next version of, of, of the coin rather than just reproducing the same coin again in, in another quantity to be able to go and do that. I think uh, the, in thirty years, the Lakewood has evolved, okay? And uh, so I think a, a, a new coin can uh, should, should reflect what we've grown to become. Um, and that would maybe be something that sometime during 2026, it could be planned on so that uh, oh, we, we, we can, we can move forward. And, and, and we, I don't want to let it go until we run out of coins and have none. And then, and then trying to do something at the last, yeah.
That should be something maybe we work on like four next year, since it is the thirtieth, we might as well. I'll wait two years, we get it done next year, I would think. We'll give them out quick. Yeah. That's not a bad idea, Sally, to think about maybe a design for that or work on it a little bit.
Okay, I've taken a note.
We can find some funding for that. Any other thoughts or comments by council before I, you know, wax poetically?
Wax on.
All right, shall I wax on, wax off? Um, yeah, I just want to give a heartfelt thank you uh, to all the good work you've done. You know, Patty and I were on the Arts Commission. I was the liaison. She was on the commission. And this is, I don't know how many years ago, but I was on the Arts Commission a long time ago for a number of years, at least as a liaison. And I can tell you and appreciate the incredible energy that you each bring and what you bring as a group. It is far surpassed where we were, but much like the city, we were, you know, a pimply-faced teenager then and now we're, you know, a mid-adult sort of person. And you have helped us grow along that path from our infancy to now some sort of uh, new adulthood, right? And I, I think along the path, we were always concerned as a committee and then as a council, how do we continue to harness that energy and fund it appropriately? And we're not completely there yet, but we are far down the road from where we were. And let me just give you an example. So last Friday, I chaired the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And when we started out sixteen years ago, Mike and Mary and I and Paul and some of these others who have been here a while, our total lodging tax is about four hundred thousand dollars, three fifty, four hundred thousand. And so we were doing what we could to fund what we could with lodging tax. Again, tourism-oriented uh, programming and activities to bring folks into town. That lodging tax, because of good economic development and new hotels and motels has grown from that early iteration of three, four hundred thousand to now a million two, million three a year. And here's what we've been able to do with that money in part. We've been able to do the things that you have brought to us to do, Fiesta de Familia, APCC's Simone Cultural Day, uh, the Summer Concert Series, the Farmer's Market, Summer Fest. Uh, all these incredible activities that never had a chance without funding. And I think council has come through for you to provide some funding. Not that it's perfect yet. We need to, to continue to drive forward. But it's an example of if you build it, people will come. And people love, for all the reasons you've expressed, all these incredible events because it created that sense of beloved community. And, you know, we have long said that good communities are those that embrace art and culture and recognize not just their past, but where they're going. So I'm really excited about that and what you've been able to do. But I think I would continue to encourage you all to continue to dream big and force us to come along with you, you know, in terms of finding some funding, doing the big things. What does that mean? So it means on the roundabouts and I, you know, we talked about Gravely and Nianza. Uh, it is an example. There are others we need to work on as well. But this is one for the thirtieth anniversary of the city, the entrance to the city off of I-5, that we need to do something sooner than later. And it's really going to be up to you to kind of noodle over some thoughts and ideas. But I can just tell you, years ago, when we were on the Arts Commission, one of the things that was brought before us, we never had funding to do, was that swirling oak leaf, oak leaf thing. Some of you remember, remember that? There's a maquette of it up in the office. Some iteration of that may be perfect for the roundabout because it provides some sort of textual, cool branding thing that's unique to Lakewood. And it could be something that, that we could get going sooner than later, uh, providing we have some good input from you folks, good input, you know, from city staff. There have been folks that have approached me that have said, we want to invest in that and beautify that roundabout. Will you help us get some ideas? Will you help us get some ideas on the ground? So I'm now bringing that to you and I'll work with the city manager to to talk about that. But there are people who are willing to donate some private money to make this happen. Don't know how much yet, but it's something that we could, we should and can harness the energy, right? So that's an opportunity. The other is, in a little town up north where I work during the day, uh, they have a downtown art gallery. And I've been part and parcel to putting together the contracts that they do every year for the artists. And they've got these plinths, these concrete plinths, those metal bases all around the city in the downtown. And they do this call for artists and it's run by the Parks Department. And they bring in these artists through their Arts Commission and then they pay a small stipend for them to have their their piece prominently displayed for the season. And then the city, I think, through the public, they select one to purchase over the course of time, but they rotate them at least, you know, every half year, a year. Beautiful downtown. So dreaming big, one of the things that we want to do is now we have this downtown park, right? We purchased an acre and a half and we're going to be doing some cool things. It's by adjacent to the Colonial Plaza. And the other thing to create that connectivity and cool dream big piece, we're trying to do a lot of side rock projects that connect neighborhoods to the Central Business District, to the Town Center. One of the pieces that we have been working on is called this Green Street Loop. The Green Street Loop is a linear park, for lack of a better term. It will hopefully connect Bridgeport and Gravely in its big circular manner around through City Hall and the downtown, come back toward Colonial Plaza and everything will kind of end up there. We got a million two from Congress to do the planning this last year, so that part is working forward. So once the planning piece is done, uh, then we can start working on acquisition of right away as we need it. But the dream there is to make it a very vibrant, connected downtown. And what a way to do that through art and to have this little downtown gallery potentially there. So it's something to think about. Public Works will have more information about that eventually as we go forward, but as part of the planning process, why not have art and culture front and center in any infrastructure improvements that create and unite community, right? So there you go. Yeah, yeah. So keep up the good work. Don't fear dreaming big because we'll find it, we'll make it. Yeah, we'll find a way to make it happen. Yeah, and I'm always uh the guy that wants sooner than later, uh, because I know how government rolls forward in a glacial way. But uh, you are here to keep pushing on us and uh to make things happen so that we can melt the ice and move forward so we don't have to move at glacial speed. Right? I love it. Yeah, I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming, appreciate it. Yep. All right, next, we have a review of those amendments to the Shoreline Master Program. And we have our planning manager Tiffany Spear to kind of lead us off with this, I think she's here in person. All right, Tiffany? Right, I might have to. Do whatever you wish for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, this item, it starts on page fifty six of your program or agenda tonight. Uh, page sixty five shows the information specifically that we'll be talking about as amending our existing Shoreline Master Program. And then within the document, the master program itself, those changes are then reflected on pages ninety six and ninety seven in the packet. But uh, to be very brief about this, if you'll recall, part of the twenty twenty four periodic review of the comprehensive plan as well as the development regulations for the city also affected the critical areas ordinance. And in turn, in order to make that consistent with the city's Shoreline Master Program, immediately after getting done with the periodic review, there was also a few changes made it made in the Shoreline Master Program. Those have to go through the Department of Ecology for uh final certification. And so it took a while, but come June thirtieth, uh, Department of Ecology did send us back a letter saying, thank you. Everything is certified other than one required and then one recommended amendment. And so what you have before you tonight, again, at those pages, uh, you'll see the recommend recommended language in page sixty five of your packet and then where that has been dropped into the existing Shoreline Master Program, starting on page ninety six. It's just two things. And then once that is done, there will be a final certification process uh approved by Department of Ecology and we're done. The next time the city will be needing to take a look at its Shoreline Master Program, unless for some reason there's something that the city would want to do earlier, will be twenty twenty nine. So happy to answer any questions if you have them, but uh overall, this was accepted uh by the Department of Ecology without any issues. And the change, if you'll take a look, it's simply to add the reference to one more uh section of our city code at title fourteen, chapter one sixty two, and and that's it. So it's a pretty minor required change in any of it.
Can you give us a, in a couple of examples, Miss Spear, about sub paragraph H on page ninety seven? What would be those allowed activities and uses that would result in unavoidable impacts to those type NP and NS streams and buffers? Any thoughts on that?
Um, if you've got a reasonable use exception of some kind where you can't avoid altogether and you can't mitigate um through something.
And that's what it comes down to, the reasonable use exception, right, where it's.
It's allowing someone to do something on their property because the state or the city has to, yeah.
Yeah, it's unavoidable. You've looked at everything else and it's just not economically feasible or.
Right, right.
Okay, without, got it. Any questions on that? Mr. Brant Center?
Yeah, I'm uh, you know, just not totally clear on 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 the required change that they require us to make. That uh, are they adding something? They're not deleting anything that we did, they're just, the required change is to add another paragraph?
Their required change is to actually refer to an existing section of code in our critical areas ordinance as reference within the Shoreline Master Program. So there's no substantive change, this is just additional cross-reference between the two documents.
So there's no change or modification of our intent when we adopted what we first sent to Ecology?
Correct.
It's just that they, this change is that that they say, we want you to be perfectly clear.
Yeah.
And that and that and that 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 you're you're going to do that. And it 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 makes uh uh, the uh things over there. However, I was trying to look for the catalog of these two stream types of the uh the 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 non-fish bearing seasonal and non-fish bearing perpetual, I guess.
Perennial.
Uh, and 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 that were, so what streams do we have that are considered non-fish bearing perennial? Uh, you know, we've been hearing a lot about Clover Creek not having water for parts of the year. So is it a seasonal stream or is it a seasonal stream prone to flooding or or what?
Yeah. Like Lake Louise, uh, Ms. Silva is saying, uh, but what you have is within the Shoreline Master Program, so at page seventy six of your packet, there is the list of uh shores shorelines that are subject to this program. And then further on through, within each of the different um sections of the code, there's more specific regulation per water body, and I'm sorry, I don't have that on the top of my head, which ones would be uh non-perennial or or non-fish bearing seasonal?
Yeah, I I I guess when we did the last update of the Shoreline Management, I guess it's maybe the, maybe it's the twenty twenty four one is that is, you know, we expanded the concept of some of the buffers and things to that to some places that we hadn't had the Shoreline Master Program applying because before we had restricted it only to those that met the definition of waters of the state.
Correct.
And then we added a a lot of uh a a few other small streams and some smaller bodies of water that were ponds or 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 or, some very small lakes being able to go and do that. So is that what has sort of driven this, having these seasonal streams of fish bearing, non-fish bearing?
No, those are pre-existing designations uh through state law. And so I'm happy to do a follow-up message out to the council clarifying which uh water bodies, streams, creeks or lakes are within any of those classifications. I just don't have that at my fingertips tonight.
Okay, I I guess a follow-up that would be nice to know if you talk, talking to people uh about it and particularly I get a lot of comments about people that sort of think that every stream ought to have fish. You know, you know, and if there are some that are just determined, they're just not, not the kind of habitat that there's going to be, be fishing and 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 not to waste a lot of effort trying to rehabilitate them for fish. It would be uh good to have a reference that 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 has categorized them and vice versa. If there is a a a stream or a body of water that is designated as intended to be fish bearing, help to maintain it.
Sure.
And 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 in that, in that regard, um, I I think that our 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 code and our things like that don't always match up with the expectations of some in the community that sort of think there should be fish in every body of water that they see or that if they were fishing it a hundred years ago, we ought to be doing something so they can be fishing it tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide that to council.
Uh, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions of a spear?
Just one note that this will not be a public hearing or anything through the city council because it is the Shoreline Management Act at the state law that sets the review and certification and the public hearing uh as a slightly different process than the normal legislation you would consider. So next week you would be scheduled for action and then the county, the Department of Ecology does final action.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I'm sad to say, ladies and gentlemen, that is the final issue for your study session for this evening. Those items tentatively scheduled for next city council meeting on the fifteenth of September include those listed on your sheet. Uh, we've got quite a few things coming up for the next meeting, including an H barn project update, which will be a good thing to chat about. So we can turn now to reports by uh Mr. Russell, our city manager.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, um, as you noted, uh, a few things coming up additionally in terms of uh, community events, just in the next two weeks, we have a Telkom Neighborhood Association meeting on September ninth, on September eleventh, the nine eleven remembrance ceremony, uh, fifteenth, public art reception, as you heard, and maybe we'll see if they can bump that agenda up since our meeting starts at six, which is pretty much the same time they had you speaking. So maybe we'll see if we can uh do some schedule adjustment within that. Um, assumption of responsibility to CSM Ronald Hansen, uh, sixteenth, Fort St. Elcom Neighborhood Association meeting and on the eighteenth, the American Lake Park ribbon cutting uh for the improvements that were done there. Um, outside of that, a couple of other things I'm looking uh forward now that I've had two weeks to be fully transitioned in and can jump into some more of the substantive issues. Uh, looking, mentioned the downtown uh park uh component. So jumping into that to see exactly where we're at, the different components, what we we need to bring back to council if anything. So um, just started some, asking some more of those detailed questions this week to see if we're at that RFQ process or if we have anything else coming back before council. So try and find a time here in the, in this fall to come back and get that solidified to get us on a strategic direction to to start moving forward with that. Um, the other thing following up on, I had discussion at the last two meetings about Colonial Park uh plaza area. Right now doing a deep dive through our current ordinances to make sure that uh, we see if we have anything that does apply right now versus implementing something else. So doing a little devil's advocacy amongst the different departments to see, okay, do we have something in place now to address some of those gatherings? So um, more information on both those items that come forward into the future, but trying to make sure we're taking the right approach on both of those avenues. And that's all, Your Honor.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Russell? So I think it's a good idea to get the input from staff and then set some time aside for input from council to kind of solidify at least where we are and the path forward on the downtown park. That would be helpful.
Yeah, and and on something like this, whenever we go out with an RFP for any different components, uh, some of this nature, we bring that RFP, at least in the past, I'd bring that back to council for review before issuing it out. So you can see we're hitting all those qualities that um you've had the discussions on previously and especially I think that's even important. Even though I watched some of those meetings, it would probably be a good idea just to have that come before a council review prior to issuing that, just to make sure we're hitting all those different components that we want looked at through that planning process as well.
Excellent. Excellent, very good. We all thank you. Oh, Mr. Brant Center and then Mr. Pearson, oh, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, city manager, I I I haven't had a chance to look at um whatever the MOU was for the H barn and the old agreement on what exactly the city was supposed to come to the table with once Partners for Parks raised some money. So if if I could get a copy of that to just take a look at it, um, I'd appreciate that. I just kind of want to know, yeah, send it to, send it to everyone if you would. Um, yeah, just would like to know where things have come and what we actually did or the council did agree to at one point in time and um, because a lot of things have changed with the prices and all that, so thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate bringing that up, um, because that's the first I've heard of the MOU on it, so that would be a good thing.
Or resolution, so some, some.
Getting some nodding of the heads over here, so uh, we will run that down and get that out.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Mr. Brant Center?
Yeah, yeah, and 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 on the same topic, I wanted to know whether next week when we're having our session, we're going to have Partners for Parks here and us and 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 talk about how we go forward with the H barn and to what extent. Is the person who or the firm that did the design and the estimate going to have someone here to perhaps answer some questions particularly with respect to what's modifiable?
Oh, well, I know they'll have different scenarios there that talk about um what those different scenarios could be and what is modified. So I think there's three different scenarios that'll be presented um that went through that review process. And I didn't touch base with our interim director to see if someone's available. I can't answer that question right now if they are or not. But there will be three different scenarios presented that has things that have been modified out. And I know uh, just got to be able to speak to those specifically and see if that individual that uh is on the consultant team, if someone is available, so we can reach out and see if that's available or not.
You know, presenting three different scenarios is fine, but I think that the the range of the discussion is probably going to be taking a look at elements in the different scenarios and not necessarily having to choose A, B, or C. But how do you blend what what's possible uh into something that is valuable and affordable?
Very good. Any other questions? Now, let's jump to council comments, I'll start with you, Mr. Brant Center.
Mr. Mayor, the uh, the the Pierce County process for the next version of the uh unified approach to homelessness is that 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 committee group that I've been working with is now scheduled to meet uh, um, yeah, in next month uh, in terms of where they have the consultant that has been doing some work and to be able to go through. Uh, in terms of where they have the consultant that has been doing some work and to be able to go through. So that, that, that is moving forward, but simultaneously with. Other, other work at the county level that has been moving forward with, with the same goal, but with different people. Looking at the same problem, so I'm not really, I'm looking forward to finding out how that works uh. And, 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 and where that's going to go. Um, I think that the uh. The process has been slow to be moving. We're, we're, we're several months behind what the original timeline was of, of where we, we, we thought that, that we would be. That the um. I, I think that there is uh, uh, also I would say with respect to the. The Arts Commission's report about this upcoming. Uh, artist's reception at the city hall, I think that the, the city is going to get. Uh, some significant publicity because I've been told that at least some of the Korean. Uh, local media, television and, and streaming things are going to have people here to, to cover that. As they did the, the, the one previously where there was a lot of, of, of Korean themed art going on to do that. So I think that's a, a really positive thing to do that. And uh, we had had some discussions along that vein about. Um, and the, the communications manager was going to look at whether we might be able to put together a. A booklet or a montage or something to be able to give to the. Visitors from Kimay who are going to come in October. Uh, with something that reflects the art that was currently displayed here in, in, in the, in the city hall. Similar what, to what we did four years ago when we had a joint uh, uh, dis- display of art by. Children from Gimay and children from, from, from Lakewood to do that. Uh, so I just don't know whether in the transition of communications manager who kind of was sort of looking at that. Whether that is still uh something that is going to move forward or, uh, or, or not. And, and my last question was uh, is talking about trees. And that, that we're, we're going to plant a tree with the, the folks who are visiting from China. Um, and I was wondering. What kind of tree are we going to plant? Is it, is it, is it, is it, is it a tree that has some significance to them and us, or is it? Um, going on off, I, I heard that we're planning on, planning on planting it on the grounds of the city hall. But I'm just kind of wondering. What the tree selection is going to be. Um, and uh, kind of like goes off. I, so maybe I can hear about that next week.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. The city clerk has any information. I know she's working on the plaque, but. Maybe it's a Chinese cottonwood, I don't know.
Yeah, I couldn't speak. I think uh Parks was looking at potential tree species and correct, they're looking at one of the different. Plan areas up in front.
Correct, so Parks is reviewing options for the tree.
Okay, great. Right. Great. There we go. Very good. I was trying to think of a good pun, you know, how the discussion will branch out or something like that. Falling flat, you know, going out on a limb, exactly. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I plan on attending the events on Thursday and. Um, I guess the more that the. Path between Tillicum and Lakewood is under construction, um, the more I kind of keep thinking about that there's going to be a giant retaining wall. Um, for a half a mile or more that it, it could be a nice. Location to attract graffiti uh as people drive through Lakewood and, um. If there's any way that we can encourage the folks or if we have, I, I don't know if we have even. The right to request like landscaping or, or vines to be, you know, on the wall instead of just leaving it blank for people to tag. And then trying to deal with the, you know. The rail companies on, on cleaning that up. I don't know if there is more or less proactive with that, is it?
The club's wall. That they're putting in. So as I understand it, I'm being interjected, but to give you some feedback. Wash Dot settled with the Tacoma Country Golf Club for a multiple million dollar resolution. Part of that property, including enough money to build.
Well, there's two walls. You have the retaining wall.
Are you talking about just retaining, you're not talking about?
I mean, there's, there's, there's going to be a massive surface area of people to tag and it's like. So you have the retaining wall on the bottom that, you know, uh, it's just, and then you have the sound wall above, so.
Got it, got it, got it. On the bottom part, as you come up.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so. Yeah, but if there's something that we can do to minimize it a little bit, you know, that would be, yeah, anyway, just my thoughts.
Yeah, well, you're right, because we're going to get, we're going to be stuck cleaning it up because Wash Dot doesn't do much for their own freeways.
Yeah.
Excellent point.
Anyway, thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Bill.
Yeah. Great points, uh, Councilmember Pearson. I, yeah, something. So, um, last weekend I did go to Fiesta de la Familia, saw quite a few of you there, was able to walk around and talk with people. And enjoy all the different Latino cultures and the car show was there also, which I loved. Um, and just, you know, the food, the music, the horses, you name it, all the kids. Think it's a great partnership also, um, I don't know the extent of it, like how deep, but the PBS kids are there. And I think that that brings in a lot of fun and joy for all the children. Tomorrow I will be going to the Tillicum Woodbrook meeting at six thirty, so I was wondering if we could verify that it's happening. So I'm not rushing and nobody's there, so that would be great. You can let me know tomorrow, it's fine. Uh, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Laura Sella, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is good to be back. So first I want to thank the council members for reaching out while I was out and in the hospital. Uh, it was great to hear from you and to, to really feel like I'm part of this big family, so uh, thank you for that. And you guys did great work while I was out. I, I listened into the, the meetings. Uh, you navigated things very well. It was good to hear about progress we're making in the Colonial Plaza and the. The knucklehead activity that's going on there, as you would refer to it, Mr. Mayor. Um, so hopefully we're making some progress.
Yes.
One quick uh shout out from a month ago. Uh, we had a desserts in the driveway at uh, the library and had some, some good feedback about Colonial Plaza. But in addition to that, there was, there was a young man from Oak Brook Elementary who, who bravely addressed. Three council members who were there to ask about um. Pool access and swimming access for kids, um, and concerned that, you know, if kids don't learn how to swim in the pools, they could be at risk in our lakes. Uh, and I thought that was really, really wise and really uh, a great thing to bring up. And then I saw. Recently that there was a program for kids at the YMCA to learn how to swim, and it was essentially subsidized based on income level. And I think that was a great, uh, great answer to that question, so. Uh, shout out to Arrow is the, the name of the young man uh at Oak Brook Elementary, so good, good job for him uh stepping up. Um, last, I wanted to thank uh our community for being patient during the construction that's going on. It's, it's our turn uh along Nianza to, to work with what uh other parts of our community have dealt with, including. Hipkins and Stillcom Boulevard and all that, so, um. So thanks to folks for being patient and thanks for city staff and the contractors for doing a good job out there. Last week, there was a police chase that went down Nianza towards the blockade and uh our, our. Liquid PD folks were able to eventually stop the folks after they'd circled the entire city. Um, it was, it was pretty nuts. Uh, so I was able to get some details on that courtesy of my, my new job and just really. Hear about how our, our liquid duty folks did a great job on that, so. Yeah, exactly, so it's. Other than that, I'm just really happy to be back and uh I will plan to go to uh Lake City event on Thursday. I think they're still in it on Thursday. Is that canceled? Okay, wow. Is there still an event on Thursday? Okay, yeah, so I will be there.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, don't get to the point where thinking that we're really productive when you're in the hospital, because we wouldn't want you to go in for another surgery just to make us work harder.
I still have an appendix, so there's.
You know, we got other things we can work on, it sounds like. Good. Mr. Bokey.
You're welcome. Now I'm all concerned about. Uh, Fiesta was great. I always love it. It's a great family event. It lives up to its name. Um, a lot of food trucks this year, so that was of course wonderful for me. Um, yeah, because I can't turn down food and um. As my mother said, you know, you've never missed a meal in your life, so, um, and I'm continuing that tradition, so. Uh. Really enjoyed it and, and so thankful that the, the rain stopped. It is, it is really a, a neat event. Um, SSMCP this Friday morning. I want to go back to the Planning Commission. South Summit, no, not SSMCP, Shape. So don't worry. But you need to be there. No, Shape is uh this Friday. Uh, agenda isn't posted yet. Um, last week was Planning Commission and they reviewed the comp plan, proposed comp plan changes. There are twenty-two of them, which is a lot, but a lot have to do. They're coming from the city because they, we have to update everything per state law. So I'm looking at this, uh, staff did a great job in saying, well, here's about lot splitting. Well, that's E two Senate House Bill ten ninety-six, and then there's House Bill eleven eighty-three dealing with. Uh, building regulation, building code and development regulation reform and HB thirteen fifty-three and HB fourteen ninety-one. And HB fifteen seventy-six and HB, so it goes on and on and on. There are some. Um. City proposed ones that are outside of state law and um. Uh, and, and then there are some, actually some requests from some, from some private landowners, so. They've got a lot on their docket. Twenty-two items is, is a lot, and I think their first public hearing is in, is in a couple of weeks. Um, so, you know, they're, they're back at work again on a lot of stuff and um. So we'll see how that all goes, but um. Thank you very much, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, busy week. On Saturday, the Tacoma Garden Club celebrated their hundredth anniversary. Even though it's Tacoma Garden Club, most of the work has always been done in Lakewood. Uh, including the Boulevard of Remembrance for World War One along the stretch of I five, so they were somewhat responsible, were responsible for that. So it was fun to break the ribbon over there for them or cut the ribbon and then zipped off to Fiesta de la Familia. Uh, for the ribbon cutting for the mural that we saw tonight and really enjoyed. The energy out there and the welcoming feel for the community that was present, so. Thanks to staff yet again for putting these events on. Uh, they're very important to many constituents, and so I appreciate that. And then yesterday, uh, I ran out to the Me Centro. Uh, Back to School Event, tried to find it. First of all, downtown to Me Centro, uh, they weren't there, so then I went out to the East Side Center and. Got a hold of them out there a little bit and said hello and gave our well wishes as a, as a council to their event. Uh, they were just kind of setting up, so uh, good folks doing good things uh all over the area. The nine eleven event this week, I initially said I didn't think I could go to it. Do you, do they still need a speaker for that or is it covered, you know? Mr. Schumacher. Who is? Okay, because they initially, they made an invitation. I said no, and that's fine. If they don't need me, that's fine. I'd be happy to show up, but. Um. It's a good event. The last thing I just want to talk about was Friday's mostly all-day event for me, which was chairing the LTAC committee. And just to give you a flavor, you know, we had about a million one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars available. And we had asks that exceeded the available funds by about three hundred and fifty thousand. So the committee had to pare down the asks uh considerably, and so you will see the recommendation come forth, but it was roughly. Back to where they were last year and maybe up a little bit for some and down a little bit for some of the others to, to balance the asks with the available funds. Uh, on the capital side, uh, in addition to the operating monies, we had the recommendation. Uh, staff generated initially for two million toward the H barn project. And so when it came up, certainly there was discussion about the project and the cost, and I have to tell you the. The comments from the two other panelists that were there, Dean Burke from Travel Tacoma and Linda Smith from the Chamber. Were effusive about the need for this project. Uh, for many ways and uh many reasons and. From the Travel Tacoma perspective, you know, we give them lodging tax monies to do all sorts of things to encourage. Travel and tourism in Lakewood, like the motocross event, like uh the. Cross-country uh big regional race they do at Fort Stillcom Park, like a lot of other events. And he was so emphatic about the viability and need for a facility like that. To further uh bring in the kinds of activities that he sees coming down the pike, that I said, look, I would love to have you come. The study session on the fifteenth and just provide some input. Uh, so. He and Linda will both be there for you to ask some questions, because I think the concern by all of us, including Rotary that put money into this project, was utility. It can't just be a private venue uh for weddings or that. It has to be really more open to the public and more utilized. And maybe, uh, maybe it serves us as an interim senior center if it gets off the ground while we're working on the downtown park and, and that. But just, I want us to have an open mind because there's a lot of, there's a lot of well-meaning people in the community who are funding this. And, and want to see what we can do within a budget that works. So anyway. Um, it was a really good process. The other thing about LTAC, in addition to just obviously the, the one capital facility piece on the operation side, was the energy from all of the groups that came. To thank us for funding them and to hear from them what they did with our funds, with lodging tax funds. And what they plan to do for the future and the energy and the excitement of what, you know, Paul was here for the Playhouse presentation was amazing. I mean, they brought, they brought like twenty-five people to talk about the cool regeneration of what the Playhouse has done. Year over year in terms of their subscription base, their audience participation in terms of the numbers of heads and seats. And uh, just, you know, amazing stuff. And then the gentleman who's the new exec director from. Lakewood Gardens talked about their gala which exceeded expectations this year. Their Pour in the Park uh event that brought in over five hundred ticket sales and people from Bellevue to Olympia and Vancouver. To Lakewood for an amazing event. I attended that and volunteered at it. And so just all these great things that are happening because of the seed money. That we have initially provided through LTAC, so. Uh, it was a good day and it's always heartwarming to hear these stories about the, the amazing things that are happening in our community as a result of. Of what we're able to do as best we can with the funding that we have. So you'll get the recommendation uh later on in September. I think it comes before sometime either September or early October, I forget which, but. Uh, it, it, it was a good event. It was a good process. So roundabout, we heard a little bit about possible art, people who are interested. I was contacted, I referred them to Public Works. I think they met with. Mr. Remack, but there are some individuals that represent groups that have some resources that are interested in. Figuring out a way to contribute to make that happen sooner than later in terms of art in that roundabout, because it is a central focus to bring. terms of art in that roundabout because it is a central focus to bringing people into the downtown after Nianza is done. So more to follow on that. But I think, Mr. Russell, just to double double check with Public Works, that we are, they did tell us that they were going to make sure power is provided to the roundabout in case there's some uplighting opportunities. So before, you know, concrete is poured, no, we want power. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and water for irrigation. Yeah, that would be great. Mr. Bransitter.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to start to be clear because I, we have different discussions about the gravelly Lake Nianza roundabout. And people use the same term to describe two different places.
Sorry.
Okay, and we, and we're, there's a north roundabout and a south roundabout, I guess, or the east and the west. I don't know how you do that. But even during the Arts Commission discussion, there was a discussion about they were, we were talking about one and then then we started talking about the other of being able to
The one yet to be built.
Go and do that. So it's, we maybe need to make sure to decide how are we going to differentiate between the two of those as we, as we talk to people.
Well, the one with the signage is already kind of done. We've already got signage on that one that's well lit and beautiful and stuff. So it'll be the north one that we're talking about. So that'll be great. That's all I have. Unless there are any other alibis for the good of the order.